We're gonna start the meeting.
Found it and threw it away.
We're starting, Joe. Sorry to interrupt your story.
That was a good story. We'll finish up later.
I know. Does anybody have any need to either add an executive or any other item to our agenda? Okay.
Move to approve the agenda as written.
All favorites say aye.
Aye.
Anything on the meeting minutes of September 20th? Okay. Town manager's report?
Our yearly paving was completed last week. We were able to mill and pave the north end of Arch Street, shim and overlay Orchard Hill Drive and Kendall Hill Road. Chad and I met with Dollar General to come up with a solution to resolve the safety concern on the sidewalk at the intersection down here on Plains Road and Route 7. The decision was made to extend the culvert on the south side at intersection, add fill up to the edge of the sidewalk to get rid of the two-foot drop, and Dollar General has agreed to cover all the costs for it, so we're happy about that and they were great to work with. Had a meeting with Federal Highway and V-Trans to discuss the town's financial responsibilities for Route 7's segments 2 and 3 projects. There was discussion on the possibility to town take an over segment 2 and pre-construction. And unfortunately, this turned into more of an introductory meeting that I wasn't expecting, and we have actually rescheduled a follow-up meeting to discuss it further next week. So, more to come on that. Attended the VLCT Passive Town Fair last week. Got a lot of free pens, so if you guys need pens.
Perfect.
Attended the Rutland Regional Transportation Advisory Committee meeting on the 28th. Our guest speaker was our representative, Butch Shaw. He discussed what state and federal funding will be available this year on transportation projects and upcoming grant opportunities for car chargers, a new improved complete streets program which they just put out, so it'll add more for stormwater and stuff, and more funding to support the Class 2 highway and structures grant programs, which is good because they extended the district and they were getting a little short on money, so. We've sent 16 properties to our attorney to start the tax sale process. Any packets, the official letter from V-Trans on the extension of the 25 mile an hour speed zone on Route 7, and the certification that Helen will be recording in the town records. Also attached is the Otter Creek Communications District asked to put their budget summary and what they've been up to in the board packets, so that's there for your review.
Is there a better map somewhere?
For?
For the Communication District? They have a map on back of one of their pages, but it's not, I mean, it's not readable.
Oh, sure. I can blow that one up.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because we know what streets in Pittsburgh are, like where, you know?
Yep, yep, sure. I can try to find a better map for that.
Thanks.
And also attached at the last meeting, the board requested more information on the grants that I had brought to you guys before, so there's all this stuff on the bylaw, the bylaw modernization grant and the planning, municipal planning grant. And some other stuff on an item will be feared alcohol consumption on town property. And rec news. Actually, I would like to introduce our new rec director, Liz Avirado. Heard I give her a couple of meetings before she came, too, so she'll be confident you guys won't scare her off, so. It's been great working with Liz. She's got a lot of great ideas. The community really seems to enjoy her so far, so. And I'll tell you what she's been up to. Senior luncheon was a success catered by Kamutas. Senior surveys are received well, collaborating with McClure Library and the Congregational Church to organize additional activities for the seniors such as movies, dances, and games. Liz is becoming a certified bone builder instructor to offer classes at no charge for the elderly committee. We have a disc golf tournament and Sarah Story's Chili Cookoff and Beer Garden on October 14th, so that's exciting. Otter Jamboree, first ever Pittsburgh and Brandon Rec Soccer Jamboree for all youth teams. Concession Stand will be reopening at the Rec Field. Ov versi soccer teams to referee and volunteer for the event, and the jamboree will be held at the Pittsburgh Recs area on October 22nd. Pittsburgh Halloween Spooktacular at the Pittsburgh Rec is on the 29th of October, and that's a collaboration with the Library Low Threat PTO and the Village, Pittsburgh Village Farm. We need basketball coaches, and registration opens in late October, and Liz says myrec.com is coming soon, so. That's all I have for the evening.
All right, great. Thanks. Any select board member remarks?
I just have a question. If we ever figured out anything on the cover for the salt shed that's got the holes in it?
Oh geez.
So, the last time we went round and round with that, the company is no longer in business.
There's a big surprise.
So, it's probably no good at this point, so they were purchased, they were bought out by some company in Texas. I talked to them and so at this point, I don't see how we can chase someone that's not in business anymore. We'll probably have to look and see if we can do some sealant or something on it at this point.
How big are the holes?
They're not big. I mean, some of them have been patched.
Like, are we getting huge puddles in there when it's raining heavy? No.
No, if you go down, you know, when it's like the moon's out or something, you can see, you know, you can see a little daylight through it, but they're pretty small, so.
Okay.
Nothing's changed since the last time we looked at it, but.
Well, right, I know.
No, it's too bad. It's unfortunate.
It is very unfortunate.
Is there somebody who can fix it though, I guess? That's the main question.
I think the only way to fix it is put a new canvas on it. I had a guy come, a guy up in Greensboro, I can't think of the company's name now, but he's done a lot of them through Vermont, and he came down and took a look at it and wasn't worried about it, so. He was thinking maybe it was stretched too tight or, you know, some of the tie-downs were not.
Well, it's just ratchet straps.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but you still can.
Overtighten it. Well, that's what I'm saying. It'd be easy to over tighten it with a ratchet strap.
Did the company install it?
They had an engineer the entire time. That's what a lot of that cost was.
This was before me, but there were quite a few people involved.
They had an engineer sit there through the entire.
Thirty thousand dollars through the whole thing.
Because this was through a grant, right?
Yes.
My god.
I know, I was just gonna say.
It was still our tax dollars.
Still, yeah, it is. No, it was pretty expensive.
No, it ended up being like a half a million dollars for a tent.
I paid ratchet straps.
I know. When I saw, when I actually saw it for the first time and I was like, wow, $500,000 isn't going far these days, ratchet straps.
Then the doorway screwed up on it.
Yep, doorway was messed up.
Well, in the end.
It came out all right, yeah.
Let's keep on our solid.
We could have built it ourselves for about what it cost, so it was six and one and a half dozen. It was around, we had, what, 140, 150 in it, and that guy in Greensboro, because he did the one that did the one at laws, and, you know, the cost of that and what we had to do, it was six and one and a half. But it was a lot of taxpayer money wasted, yeah.
Yep.
Well, it's one of those ones where like you see some of those grants, and I mean, don't get me wrong, I love getting grants if they work, but now some of like the transportation alternatives ones for sidewalks and stuff, like you end up paying so much for engineering and you have to have so many people involved with it that by the time, like Dave said, you get to your match, your match basically covers the whole, the cost if you were to do it in-house, so. And that seems like that might have been one of those projects.
Yeah, absolutely.
But, you know, everyone does it once.
And then we learn.
You hope you only do it once.
I have one question. On the extension for the 25 mile an hour area, I've seen two things written up on where it ends past Joe's. Where is it?
So, it's right there around, right, we'll find, I think they marked it already with some survey stakes.
I don't know. I read the paper said something on the report from our meeting last night. This says it different.
Yeah, well, I would go with.
So, it does not go to the top of the hill from the mobile?
No, no.
So, we're gonna have an acceleration at the bridge?
I was confused too, because the wording says the Village District, and I thought the Village District went all the way to the mobile.
It does. So, they, so the meeting, I mean, this originally started us knowing we don't want to do anything. So, when we had the transportation meeting, actually Commissioner Flynn was there and Secretary Morrison from Department of Public Safety. And actually, Joe wanted to put it down at the bridge at first, so that, you know, and then they got talking about how, well, cars coming from the hill, there wouldn't be enough time to decelerate to get to the 25, so. They, everyone kind of agreed on moving it up. Basically, where the 35 sign is now by Joe's is, it's kind of in that area right there.
Okay.
This one was easy. When they, when they saw the, when everyone saw where the crosswalk was by Kamutas, that was, that was a pretty easy one to sell, so.
So, they didn't.
It already is 25 there, though.
They didn't extend it to the top of the hill like we requested?
No.
That's a huge sign, safe speed.
Well, that's a corner.
Well, it'll be 35 like it is now. Well, the 35 goes to the top of the hill, so.
So, it does or doesn't go to the top?
Not go to the top of the hill.
35's at the top of the hill now.
Most people hit 55 by the mobile station.
They're still gonna.
They drop down in the third gear at the bridge.
That doesn't, that doesn't solve our issue with the trucks coming down the hill.
No, but it is 35 at the top of the hill. I mean, the, well, I mean, really, it is. I mean, and like they said, most of it is enforcement, you know, that's the thing that, that's what makes people change their habits, so. It's a start, you know? I think when we start talking more about segment 2 and maybe the possibility of taking the road over, then we have more options, because we'd have the whole village zone.
There's actually been a state trooper down in the village.
There were definitely more tickets written on that, on 7, if you look at Chiefs.
Joe?
I travel around quite a little bit with a truck in other states. To me, it seems too bad to have it 25 miles an hour when you're through the whole village of Pittsburgh at 2:00 in the morning. There are places where they have signs that are flashing at certain speed after certain hours, and maybe that's not possible, but gosh, you've got people that may be traveling the length of this state and they come to Pittsburgh, gotta go all the way through Pittsburgh at 25 miles an hour at 2, 3:00 in the morning. It doesn't really seem right. I realize during the day when school is in session, 25 is most likely a sensible speed. But is there a way that it can be a little more than 25 in the, through the middle or through the dead part of the night?
I don't know the answer to that, Joe, but I could certainly inquire about it.
Maybe it isn't possible, but.
I mean, my guess is there's probably not going to be anybody patrolling it at that time of the night either, so.
They're probably still doing 50 through there. 2:00 in the morning.
They do 75 hours at that time, at 7, so it's no problem.
This is a terrible question, but isn't it 25 during school when school's in session?
25 all the time.
It's 25 all the time.
Yeah, for that first.
Otter Valley has.
Otter Valley does, yes.
We don't have that at all?
No.
No, it's just 25 all the time through in that stretch in front of the school, but.
Like I said, it's a dumb question.
Well, no.
No, no question, dumb.
Okay. Do we have any public comment tonight? All right, so Liz, do you want to, I don't want to keep you here because you've been here all day. Do you want to, I can skip around and talk about, we could do the Rec Area alcohol consumption. Would you like to be here for that discussion?
Of course.
All right, so we'll just skip around and we'll, new business, alcohol consumption on town property policy at the Rec Area. So, I guess, based on what you put in our packets, the last time this was discussed was in 2004? Is that what that was?
I think that is.
Okay. And then, so it did state that that it was on the vendor, right? The vendor, I can't find my stuff now, it was on the vendor. So, is the part that we need to figure out, it does also state, though, that needs to hire, that then, an alcohol vendor for any event at the Rec would have to hire a police officer?
Yeah, they have to hire a police officer and pay, I believe, it's $50 an hour for the police officer to patrol the event if alcohol is being consumed. That came into review for us because Sarah Stories is having their event on the 14th.
Right.
And we were, we advised them that they had to go ahead and get, you know what I mean, talk to chief and schedule and have a police officer, and then the conversation came up if this was something that could be donated, because this is a nonprofit. So, we started to just think about, was this policy correct, because the liability, and with my having years and years of experience under my bill for insurance, the liability should fall on whoever is serving the alcohol and whoever has pulled the special permit event, which is said, what is it?
Leambrue.
Leambrue, Leambrue Ale Company. So, they are responsible with the DLC, gives you a list of things that you need to focus on when you're serving people alcohol, bloodshot eyes, blurring speech, red face, stumbling to walk, so that is up to them, the people that are serving the alcohol, to determine, yes, I can continue to serve you, no, I can't continue to serve you. Dave and I were discussing that if, if we have to provide the town, the town has to pay and have a police officer there. That liability is falling on the town, and it really doesn't make a lot of sense. So, we were thinking that it should be kind of revised, just because, again, that liability should fall on the person who is serving the alcohol, because of course, the beer garden area is closed off, is roped off. You can't just walk around the area with the beer in your hand. You have to set, you know, stay in the said location where it is gated off, so we were just trying to see if we can amend it so like that if, depending, you know, if it's a, if it's a wedding, let's say, of 200-plus people, you know, maybe they would want to purchase, you know, and pay for a police officer to be there, so they can go ahead and just keep things under control, but to have every single event have a police officer present, you know, it's giving, it's putting liability on the town that I don't think we should have, because it should fall on the person in the business that is serving the alcohol.
We checked with, I called DLC too, just to see what they're, and actually, the 200 is what kind of triggers a security thing, so. DLC doesn't require that we have to have any police there, because like Liz said, the liability falls on the department holder, so. And then, but it, all the criteria is on the DLC website, so if there's a wedding or whatever and there's a lot of people, then they do ask for security over 200. If there's 200 there, all at the same time.
Okay, right, okay.
But I would hate to see us be part of anything, because PD was there when someone else was holding the liability.
Right.
And that was the big question.
It's like a double liability, you know, it's like, it's protection, yes, it makes sense, but then at the same time, it's going, how is the town going to be liable if this brewery or winery or restaurant decided to continue to serve? That would always come back on the people that are serving the alcohol. It's not going to fall on the Rec Department or the town itself.
Gotcha.
So, last year at this event, there was no constable on the scene there? They just had the rope up, right?
No, I think, I think they did have to.
They did.
So, no, they did, right, so.
They were just questioning it now.
Also cuts into what they're raising too as a nonprofit.
So, any license holder at an event like this would have liquor liability half insurance that would be primary as a duty to defend? And one, and I'm speaking out of school here, but I was in insurance as well, is that if there's going to be a function at a municipal property, then the, and liquor is going to be served by a license holder, they should have a certificate issued to the town of Pittsburgh listing them as an additional insurer. That certificate being issued, if anything happens as a result of that alcohol being served, their insurance carrier is going to have a duty to defend any suits filed against the town.
So, that's something that we can.
Yeah, so I think that that's something that we can, and sometimes depending on the insurance policy and the insurance company,
it's sometimes an additional charge for the insurance holder, that's on that. And, or it's just, you know, kind of like a blanket premium that's already added in, but I think that that's a great point, Mike, that if we are, we should be getting certificate of insurance at any time, any type of event is happening down there, when it is catered by a restaurant or a brewery, but having us added as an additional insured, just we are an additional insured under that said policy, so if anything was to occur, it's, they're not going to come back on the town's policy, they're going to go back to that person, business's personal policy, and they would, you know, sue them and go from there.
Would you think that anytime we rented that out, we should have a liability certificate?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
It doesn't matter if there's alcohol or not.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, no, because it's just like, you know, when we have like, you know, the small birthday parties and things of that nature, that's something different, but when it is going to be events, like for example, GE had an event there, they were hoping to have 250 people, but they only had, I believe, it was 68, because the weather wasn't that great. So, when it's businesses and things of that nature, I think it should, they should issue a certificate of life, of insurance for us. When it's the small, you know, gender reveal parties. Exactly. It already says there on the bottom that we are not to be held responsible.
There's a business in exchange for dollars going on.
I wouldn't be surprised if there was language to this, speaking to this very thing. It's not new. It's been going on for a year.
I did, Randy, we had to do them off of the town hall and everything, but the breweries at town, so, you know, that's how, and the league has actually a policy that we can do for rentals of, you know, town facilities, so, you know.
And I just think that with a nonprofit, and it just came up more, so when I saw the policy, when I started, started the job, I was like, that's a little, that's a little funny. I was like, okay, that's a little too much protection, overprotection, I would say. Yeah, and then when Sarah Story, she was like, you know, when we were thinking, this is a nonprofit, would it be, you know, can the charge be waived? And then that's when we started to talk about, because it's just like, you know, 200 people in one location drinking alcohol, you're going to want that extra security. You're going to want to make sure that, you know, things are being, you know, kept an eye on and things are being, you know, because things can get a little rowdy. But I just don't think that it should be enforced for every single, you know, it should be based on the amount of people attending the event.
But in that case of over 200 people, that still needs to fall on the person vending the alcohol, whether they hire our police department or private, private security, whatever. That all needs to be on that.
Absolutely. It would still be the same thing, exactly, at all, and that's why we need to have the certificate of insurance naming the town at the Recreation Department and the town of Pittsburgh as additional insurers, and that'll just kind of just, you know, minimize that additional.
So, would, oh, sorry, Mark, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, should we just have Dave rewrite this up for us?
Yeah.
So, we can make a.
That's what I was gonna ask, if we could do that.
Between the two, probably get something.
Yeah, yeah.
We can move on it then, right?
So, are you guys okay with this thing with PD being there for this October 12th thing being waived, so that?
As long as the liability.
Yeah, the liability's on the vendor. I mean, that's state.
What I'll do is I'll contact the organizers of the event, and I will have, I will request a certificate of insurance naming the town, and once we have that in hand, then we can say, you don't need your police officer until then. We'll say you'll still need your police officer until we have that certificate of insurance in hand.
Okay. Yeah, sounds good.
Write us up something for next year.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
I just have one question. How are you going, it's just not always cash in hand, because don't they charge for the birthday parties?
We charge for the exclusive use of the pavilion, based on the amount of people. Just the pavilion, and not food or anything like that, so the rental fee is the pavilion rental fee, and that is based on the amount of people for your, that is attending, and if you are a resident or non-resident of Pittsburgh.
All right, great. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Any other questions?
No?
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you. All right, let's move back to old business, discussion of solar siting and enhanced energy plan.
See ya.
Excuse me. All right, so.
Why are you leaving, Dave?
Because part of what you're talking about involves my property in Florence, if you're doing the industrial zone, so I don't want anything to do with this if that's included.
Okay, just, I just didn't know.
Yeah, no, okay, yeah.
Because you, you, are you, you're still the representative down at Rutland Regional, right?
No, I'm not, no.
You're not anymore?
I just, I can only do so much, so I gave that up a month ago.
So, who's doing it?
Well, go ahead, Dave.
No, no, I just wondered.
Yeah.
Just so I know.
So, is he recusing himself?
He is, he is, yep. He has been, but every time we've discussed this.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so.
Well, he was at, the only reason I ask is because he was at the last solar project that, when I went there.
Yep.
I thought.
Yeah, just since we've been talking about the enhanced energy plan.
Because it's a Pittsburgh.
Yeah.
Got it, I got it.
Is there anything you'd like to start off with, or?
I have nothing new, really. I mean, we, we've kept this on here to figure out, unfortunately, I wasn't at the last meeting. One thing with these two grants that showed up with, that I had, and I'll show you guys last week, the municipal planning one is a good one for the town to apply to do the town plan, but I was told that they will take, they won't do it just for the town plan, but if the enhanced energy portion goes in it, then they will consider funding. So, the other thing is, and I think I've probably said this before.
Excuse me.
Unfortunately, there is no other language that we can create, come up with, write, or whatever, that's going to give us this.
Right.
Substantial difference.
Yes.
So, if we want to play the game, we have to follow the rules and come up with this plan, and the other thing too, like, it's not set in stone. You know, if someone comes to the town with a project and the town's like, this is great.
Right.
And they want to support it, by all means, support it. From doing this plan somewhere else, or actually being a part of it and seeing it work, it sort of eliminates the folks that come in with these massive projects, that they see that the town has something on record, and that's what sort of deters them to go somewhere else. Now, I haven't heard of anyone challenging one yet, so, but that's really, that's how, unfortunately, that's how the PUC is now, like, you want to play the game, you've got to do, you've got to follow these rules, so.
Right.
There are instances where language is in place in towns, and because that language is in place without having an enhanced energy plan, the PUC still considers, it's not a silver bullet.
We tried it.
It's not a silver bullet, so, but, but from what I understand, you were told at Rutland Regional by somebody, I don't know who, that you cannot, you simply cannot do it.
Well, we've been told by a few people, Mike, actually.
I understand, but what I'm saying is, there's precedence that language, having towns have language without a comprehensive energy plan still gets the attention and the consideration of the town's wishes.
So, we've tried that with a few things, and then I think I printed off something that I.
I know, I wish, I shouldn't have brought, there's some updated legislation that specifically says we're towns to have standing, that needs to be, it can't just be solar siting language, it has to be an enhanced energy plan.
Yeah, it's kind of.
That's current language.
Fairly new. I remember sharing that with the board, I think it was Act 174, maybe.
Yeah, and, you know, I would like to see us, I mean, we've discussed this so much, I think it'd be a good idea to have an enhanced energy plan, to have something against, or not against, but something to, what's the word I want to use? I mean, how many people are in the PUC? Three? You know, I think it'd be nice for Pittsburgh to have something a little beefier, so that we're, have something to work with.
Well, you've got enough citizens that have certainly come to this board.
Well, that's, it's been consistent over and over and over. I mean, I think everybody that has come has wanted us to do something in that, in that direction. So, I think it's a good idea.
If I might, for a minute.
Yes.
I haven't seen where the plan that was most recently in discussion. I did, I was trying to help Kevin with, because he had gotten stuff that got sent to Mark, and then, because Mark was the chairman, and we got it, and then, remember, we talked about, you were probably on the list, and yada, yada, but they are named, there was, there was pre-hearing conference calls, and the adjoining landowners all had to be listed, so I'm really, I have, I'm confused as to why the adjoining landowners are not participating, because they have standing to do so, there's a process that they have to go through.
Right.
And they just can't walk.
They are participating in knowledge.
Okay, but they are, but then there was a question about the Rutland Regional, and I attended a meeting, Donna was there. We sat through the whole presentation on Fairhaven's solar plan, that, that was a pretty good size one over there, and you know, I'd never been to one, and I saw them vote to approve it. Whatever they send in, I don't, I don't know, but my question is, have these people, are these people aware, and it came up at one of our last meetings, that they're, they have to go before Rutland Regional? Have these people, are these people aware of that?
They were, yeah, two of the, the meeting that, when you and I were at Regional, two of the property owners were there. Yeah, you were there as well.
So, they're not even required to come present to us anymore? It's very.
The change of law?
It's very odd, yeah, like, they don't need a letter from the select boards, they're the planning commissions anymore.
They never needed one to begin with. That was only, that was only for preferred, preferred siting criteria. That was a.
preferred siting criteria. That was a, a group letter of support that would make their, as a matter of fact, I'm a developer, if, if I have a joint letter of support, the cost of my permitting process is less. That's why these folks are in here. You know, we've had, um, folks come to the planning commission and say, well, hey, we don't really need your approval, but we're here as a courtesy. I'd like to circle this back around a little bit to, uh, to not being able to have solar language, um, or a solar, or an ordinance speaking to solar siting. Are you telling me that this town cannot write a so, an ordinance?
Well, it wouldn't be an ordinance, Mike. It would be part of the town plan, so an ordinance would be a whole different beast.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, let's go back to the discussion of solar siting. Forget about the enhanced energy plan here for a little bit, because that's, that's a little bit more involved and maybe a little more timely. But I think the, what's on the agenda is solar siting. So.
And both, a solar siting and enhanced energy plan.
I understand. I don't think it started out that way, but I think it was amended. Anyway, I just wanna, I just wanna stay on topic, in the sense that, okay, um, I'm not hearing that the town of Pittsburgh cannot have an ordinance speaking to solar siting. Other towns have, and unless this, unless this policy change is very, very new, um, I think that Pittsburgh can still have solar siting language without an enhanced energy plan, and without having it being on the town plan, and when any developer is submitting an application to the PUC, there's a question on that other three or 24-page application that says, are there any restrictions, ordinances, or zoning language that's related to solar siting? And once they have to say, yes, there is, okay, again, this isn't a silver bullet, this isn't a guarantee, because quite frankly, none of it's a guarantee. So, the PUC reviews that, and they say, well, okay, what's, what's in this? What, what's the town have to say? And I'm just gonna go back, because about four months, um, regarding solar language, solar siting language in the town of Pittsburgh, I was asked, strongly encouraged, to put some solar siting together, and I just wanna go back to Rutland Regional. So, something being added or amended to the town plan, that sounds like there may be, or possibly, or you've been told by several different people that, that, that can't be happened, that can't happen. However, an ordinance being a completely different beast, I'm, I'm not hearing a lot of feedback saying that that can't be done, and in other towns where I've done solar work, they're certainly there. And they don't have comprehensive energy plans. So, um, I'm part of the planning commission, and, uh, discussions regarding a comprehensive energy plan, uh, has been brought to light that these comprehensive energy plans can have a lot of conditions that can, how should I say, could have many earmarks that could try to change the very nature of how our town is operated. Seems to be a, a very heavy and, uh, lengthy process to even explore that. But in the meantime, I'm sitting here encouraging the select board to entertain and to pursue the idea of putting together, getting some language, albeit ordinance or not, or other ways that aren't amendment to the town plan, and therefore, ergo, need a comprehensive energy plan to put something on the books. So that way, if there's somebody who wants to put up a five-megawatt site that, hey, maybe a five-megawatt site can be supported and liked, but what if somebody comes in with a five-megawatt site that no one in the town likes? Then we have a leg to stand on. Granted, not a silver bullet, however, but we will have the platform in which to resist, appeal, and have the state, those three people on the PUC, recognize that Pittsburgh, not a couple of neighbors, but Pittsburgh as a town, may take issue with it. And I'm also gonna speak a little bit more to this, and let's stop thinking about whether a five-megawatt site goes in or doesn't go in. Let's think about how or where a five-megawatt site is, how it's built, how it's screened, what considerations the developer or the plant owner is going to, um, be able to make this more palatable, all these things. These discussions can happen, but they can't happen if we don't have any language. So, I, I don't think I could spend any more words on it. I think you guys got my message, is that there's actually something that you guys can do now, that doesn't need Rutland Regional, it doesn't need the blessing from the PUC. You guys can do it now, as an ordinance that speaks to solar siting. I, I'm not proud, but I, I provided the language for you to do it. It's been four months. If you have any questions, I'm right here. Ask them, please. Cause I don't, I don't know how else to say. I'm, I don't really have a horse in this race. Let's do it.
We were told it would have no legal standing.
Do you do?
Without more specifics involved.
From the town.
From who?
No, from, uh, Regional.
From Regional, but, I think that's what you say.
And Butch mentioned the same thing, about current, current, um, language in the legislature.
Wait, I'm not finished. So what they're saying, what they're saying, and, and from, from what I understand, through cultivating this, this information, is that, is that if you do that, it does, it's not guaranteeing you the standings that you might be looking for. And I've never sat here and said that it would guarantee it, but I did provide examples of where the PUC said, oh, this town doesn't have a comprehensive energy plan. However, they do have language, they have language in an ordinance that speaks to the sensitivity of solar siting in their community. Oh my God, let's let, let's listen to them. That's what I'm trying to say. So I think there's been a real big disconnect with what we're trying to do here four months ago, and where we are today. And I'm trying to close that gap. Okay, so, I implore you guys to stop thinking of the fact that, hey, we can't do this without a comprehensive energy plan, and to start thinking along the lines of, how can we get some language on the books that at least puts it there? Maybe it's not silver bullet, but puts it on the books so that when a large developer submits an application, they have to say, yes, by golly, Pittsburgh cares about solar siting. Because ultimately, that's going to be the message, however informal or formal, that gets delivered through the application to the PUC that says, yes, Pittsburgh cares. This isn't complex. This really isn't. You guys are just getting a lot of information from a lot of different directions. Why am I sitting here so confidently speaking to this? It's what I do for a living. I go to other towns like yours, and I do the same thing that these other developers do to our planning commission. I'm the guy who does this.
So, Mike, sorry to interrupt you. What other towns, what other towns have actually been successful with doing a solar siting ordinance? Are there any that you know of?
Um, there are some that I know of. I don't have them off the top of my head right now, but four months ago, when I put this together and put it together, uh, presented it to the planning commission, I had, uh, I had all that documentation, but.
It'd be, it'd be interesting to see if, like, who's been successful with, I've never even heard of them doing an ordinance while, like.
A solar ordinance?
It's usually gone in a town, it's usually gone in a town plan.
You can say there's no guinea hens in the, in the village of Pittsburgh.
Well, we could, the, the select board can do an ordinance for just about anything, as long as the public supports it.
That's right.
There you go. So what, so, so.
Has to go to hearings and stuff.
So let me beg the question, what's keeping this town from putting in a three-sentence ordinance relating to solar siting, right now?
Have you?
I don't.
Three sentences is enough?
So, yes, that's what I'm trying to tell you, three sentences is enough.
Well, I'm here, Dave.
I, I, I'm not the one to make the decision here, I'm just the one gathering the information.
How much language do you have now?
I, I don't wanna see us fail when we write this thing. That's, that's the, like, Mike and.
So, I'm glad, no, no, wait, hold on, I'm glad you brought it up. I don't wanna see us fail either. But what I'm saying is, you and I, and everyone in this room could work for the next two years and not have something that's a hundred percent. So, so we're living in a gray area, whether you like it or not. And if we wait around, and this has been the, this has been the message from the planning commission, if we wait around until it's polished and perfect, and it's, you know, it's gonna be 99.5% effective to meet our goals, you know, we're gonna be here for five years. And, and during that five years, people are gonna walk in.
I think we all agree with that.
No, people are gonna walk in, and they're gonna submit their applications for the five-megawatt sites, and we're not gonna be able to do anything about it, because we're still working on our polished work. And what I'm saying is, why not do an ordinance? It's not gonna stop anybody from making any additional efforts in the meantime to, to expand on that.
Be a work in progress.
No, well, I, Tom.
It's a starting point.
Tom, I, I already, I already wrote it out a couple of months ago. I just haven't seen it go anywhere.
So what's the process to get the board?
And if there's questions, ask the question.
We just pass it on.
No, no, I'm just saying, it's something, nothing, we don't have anything right now.
You don't have any. Yeah. Policy you can pass, ordinance has to go to, you have to have two hearings for an ordinance, that has to be worn a different way. Ordinances are very different to get approval than a policy.
Can I just weigh in here for a second?
Yeah, go ahead. Hold on, hold on.
Excuse me, before I lose my train of thought, Mike, you were on the planning commission, we prepared an energy guidance form, the select board approved it, and we're, and we've used that at previous hearings. So we do have something in place. Yes, okay? It's an energy guidance form, there's about six or eight, and that just, you know, that got done, and that's never been repealed, to my knowledge. I still have it in my briefcase, and we have a hearing, or when a person, when someone comes in, and like Mike says, they no longer have to come in. They used to come in, and so get a letter from us, and they'd get a letter from the select board. They no longer do that. Okay, but we have that, that document regarding solar. The other thing is, um, if you are gonna have, you're, you're, you're talking an ordinance now, that's something that I'm not familiar with. If you're gonna have it in your zoning, you've gotta make sure that it's complementing the plan. But you have to really look at Act 249. I'm not a lawyer, I've looked at it. It's a very, very rare breed. The PUC's decision is not appealable. An Act 250 district commission hearing is appealable. Um, it goes to an environmental court. That decision is appealable to a supreme, to the Vermont State Supreme Court. So, you know, I, I'd really like to see, Dave Atherton brought up a good point, what, what, Mike says he's got instances where language is in the plans. I'd like to see that. So, and then my suggestion would be that you get, weigh in with legal on it. Because when we did our town plan, the energy plan, that thing about substantial deference came up, and we decided to go with Regional's plan. At that time, Rutland did not have an energy plan, Rutland Regional. It was turned down, the first one they submitted. Then finally, it was approved. Then the way the law worked is towns can put the energy plan together, and it can be approved by the Rutland Regional Planning Commission as long as their plan is still in effect, and their town plan is, or their regional plan is in effect. They have a regional plan, and the energy plan is part of that. So, we do not have, at the last planning commission meeting, we talked about this, we do not have the resources that I know of to do all this solar siting. And they came in, and the maps were over there for the longest time, and they came in with preferred, and on, and on, and on. So, a solar developer coming in, they're gonna, that's what they see. They're gonna see that at Rutland Regional, and I don't know, they're not here, so they're not gonna see them here, but I'm sure they're online somewhere. Just so everybody knows, that's where I think we stand. And at our last planning commission meeting, we decided to have someone come from Rutland Regional, so we could start talking about, because there's a lot of changes that are gonna be required, you know, with zoning. Your town plan, your zoning cannot be in conflict with your town plan. And we wanna see where we're at, so we could get some ideas. Now, our town plan is not gonna expire tomorrow, it's gonna be a couple of years. But the couple of years will go by fast, and if we're gonna do, if you want an enhanced energy plan, yes, we, we've got to, and the other thing is, two years, things can change, too. So I don't wanna jump in and, you know, while we still have two years on the plan, if we can be working on whatever we've gotta work on, whatever changes we've gotta make. Because the, the first deadline that I see the planning commission has is in the first of July 2024, we have to be in compliance regarding one-acre lots that have town water and town sewer. Our current zoning says you need one acre. That is called modernization of zoning regulations. It clearly says that this zoning shall provide a minimum of five housing units on an acre of land. So, that's, that's my spiel, of where we're at. Cause we gotta be able to work, we only meet once a month.
So you could do, you could actually do solar language and do an amendment to your town plan before your plan expires, and put it, get it in your town plan before you rewrite.
As long as we have to have our hearings.
We still have to do the hearings, just like an ordinance.
And that's gotta be, it's also has to be approved.
Right.
Yeah.
Joe?
Back, back when the windmills were a big topic here a few years back, we had some discussions on regulations and trying to get this and that done. Did anything ever come of that, or wasn't?
Well, that is in our town plan.
The state already shut it down. You didn't have to do it, Joe, the state shut it down for you.
Yeah, we put no, we did not support industrial wind.
We never took a step forward in any, in the regulation.
It did get right into the town plan.
So, back, I understand, there's solar language in the town plan, too, there's a couple little hints at it. Yeah, so it, oh my God, we don't have an energy plan, but there's solar siting in the town plan. Joe, in 2017, the state of Vermont came out and said, look, not, nothing above, over 90 feet. So, that, that just shut, shut wind in Vermont four.
He was only here that, not that long, he's been there since, here since then. What year was that? It was only three, four years ago.
Alicia, find me.
Anyway.
I'm gonna bring this back to what we're talking about. Um, I think Mike said it very well, and did a very clear job of saying, really, where we're trying to go is, we don't wanna open up the town plan. And if there's an enhanced energy plan that's gonna be done next time you do it, then that's the board's criteria. The, the plan that's in front of us is awful. And I can go through all the marks I made in this, and many of the things are required, and that's why we avoided it last time we did it.
You're talking the substantial deference application.
The energy plan.
Yeah, okay.
Even if you have substantial deference, that doesn't really mean they're gonna go in your favor anyway.
That's right.
So I think Mike's point of looking at it as an ordinance, and if that's what we have to do, Dave, then I think that makes a lot of sense to have something on the book that has to be checked off by a major developer coming in. We need something upfront saying that we do care about things here, so we don't look like an easy target.
No, absolutely.
And I think.
But we've had enough, people ask us for enhanced energy plans, I think that's something we need to start looking at.
But that's a different subject.
Well, that's a whole different subject than what we're talking about.
Because that's gonna happen in three or four years. This can happen in two months.
No, it's gotta happen in two, if you wanna have it be part of your plan.
And we've already contacted Regional to help us with that.
Yes.
Cause we really didn't know what you guys, and when Mark came, we talked with you, and I agree, I agree with what you say, but if, if an energy plan is what we've got to have, I'm not a lawyer, but I think the language could be very easily challenged based on what my knowledge is of Act 249. Because Act 249 is its own animal.
It's 248.
So would you, would the board consider me to look in to see what towns have a solar siting ordinance?
Yes, please.
See what, what they've done, and take Mike's language that he did a while, and see what we can do to come up with an ordinance that can be.
I can get you some ordinance language, too.
Yeah, I'd love to see some.
Okay, so that's on.
If it's effective.
That's on the select board, though. That's not for us to be working on, cause we gotta get working on that, that plan for the zone.
So I got something coming up here, and then when I get to grant opportunities about that.
I hope you got it in by September 30th, though.
No, we have one due November 1st, it's even better.
Well, so let's, uh, skip over, um, our, yeah, the veterans in, segue right into the grant opportunities, cause that directly correlates.
So, at the last meeting, I had Ann present a couple grant opportunities that I think I'd sent to Rob Spensley, he had asked about it, and I guess you guys had talked about one in your last meeting. So one was the municipal planning grant, which if we're not gonna consider an enhanced energy plan, we probably don't have any, we don't wanna do that. But this is the one that we wanna do, and Jeff Beazuzzi and I have talked about it, too, and actually, we did this before in another town. Um, the bylaw modernization grant, which goes through, like Rick's thing, saying that, you know, there's all these changes with housing and acreage and everything, and with the infill, and this is a grant we could get that. And this is a grant we could get that would then, um, we could hire someone to consult with the Planning Commission to come up with new bylaws, which we really should do because of the amount of changes that have happened. So I actually did speak with Devin down at RPC about this, because they, they would help me with. So he sent me a bunch of stuff already to start to apply for this, so.
What's the deadline, Dave?
Uh, November first.
That one's November first on modernization.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I started the application actually Monday, just because I had some time to do it. So that's a, that's a fairly easy one to do, and that's a good one.
So we're not gonna look at the other one at all? I mean, I don't think we've all agreed to not pursue enhanced energy.
If you read this one, like, it's a little more involved than what I think we want.
I'm gonna back this up for a minute, because I gotta throw this back on the table. The way they're presenting this energy plan right now, and what they put in front of us last time, I don't know if they've changed this, but this is what they sent, Devin sent us. We're gonna have to take a hard look at this before we get behind it. The requirements that are put in place for citizens are fairly invasive. And I think this is gonna be the challenge when they come up to the next round of the town plan. But if they're gonna hold us to this kinda stuff, it, this is gonna be difficult. And if you want, I can read you some of the lines.
Yeah, give me some examples, please.
I would more than happy to. So we have to be renewable twenty-five percent by twenty twenty-five. How are we doing? Not even close.
Renewable?
Renewables, by, by twenty twenty-five, we need to be twenty-six above, twenty-six percent above two thousand and five.
We, the municipality?
Yeah, that's just here.
But do we know where we're at?
Municipal plans must be.
Renewable energy.
I'm just gonna give you some of the things that are required.
Mark, can you stop for a second? Donna's confused here. And I don't wanna speak wrong. Did you say renewables?
Renewables.
Cut out some, I think.
The twenty-five by twenty-five goal for renewable energy under the Vermont VSA by the, twenty-five percent for in-state renewable supply for all energy by twenty twenty-five.
So, you gotta have twenty-five percent supporting your total energy.
There's two lines. The first one I read you was the greenhouse gas requirements and how it should be reduced. I apologize. The goal for renewables is twenty-five percent in-state renewable supply for all energy by twenty twenty-five.
All energy. But that's why Pittsburgh got hammered when Dave Mills was bringing all those plans in because of Omni. Our, each town, they, they illustrate how much electricity that you use.
I'll just give you the highlights. I don't wanna debate each one of these. It's not worth it right now.
Well, how many towns can actually do this?
Right, that's my point.
This is my, this is my point in the document.
Yeah, let's just talk about Pittsburgh.
I just wanna, yeah. So reduce fossil fuel consumption across all buildings ten percent by twenty twenty-five.
Is that municipal building or the town?
Does the plan promote efficient and climate-resistant buildings?
Be good on camera.
For all. Does the plan promote decreased use of fossil fuels for heating? That's for all. Does the plan promote a shift away from single occupancy vehicle trips? Does the plan promote a shift away from gas, diesel to electric or non-fossil fuel transportation options through strategies appropriate to the municipality? Does your plan include, your energy plan include policies and objectives, patterns and densities of land use likely the result in the conservation of energy, which is a commitment to reducing sprawl and minimizing low-density development? That's single.
Okay, well, that doesn't make any sense with what the legislature just passed.
I'm just reading what's on this plan. That is David's.
But that's his old one.
I know, it's from.
This is a copy that he just sent.
Is that the one you just got from?
Yeah, he passed it out to this group. Does the plan strongly prioritize development of compact mixed-use centers where physically feasible, appropriate use of the development? This is an energy plan. This is land use.
I think I got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they wanna put all the people in the small areas.
Yes, they wanna, they wanna squash everybody into European-style town development. So we can overload the sewer system more. Does your plan, energy element assess potential equity impacts of policy and objectives? There's a whole bunch of others. There's just some of the ones I've outlined. I don't wanna go too long. But my point is, if they're gonna change it, that'd be great. But some of these things in here are very invasive to our citizens, and I don't know that it's up to us to put them under that kinda realm. I mean, it's great if you wanna have, you know, do better things to save energy. I think we all do. We don't wanna pay the bill. But I think may, you know, encouraging or putting in place in rules, that's something you really gotta wade through when you go through the next round.
I agree a hundred percent.
And that's why we had a hang-up on this, because they were saying you have to do it this way, and you said, well, we don't wanna do it that way. So.
I have a question for Dave. Doesn't Brandon have the enhanced energy plan? And how's our culture in Pittsburgh any different from what people do with Brandon?
Honestly, it hasn't changed a thing. And I, I, so one thing I'm thinking while we're sitting here, like, you know, the town plan is like our, it's like our Sears Christmas catalog, you know, it's our, it's our wish list. It's a goal-setting book. It's, you know, we want, the, people, folks wanna see, like, it's really helpful applying for grants and other things. That we're making an effort to try to move things forward, or try to be energy efficient, or try to do some of this stuff. Zoning, that's the rules. I mean, those are the rules that are gonna affect everyone in this town. You know, that's, that's where, that's where the rubber hits the road. So, you know, the, the plan is really more of a, well, you know, the, the Planning Commission, Select Board, and whoever else is involved are looking out to, you know, they kinda have a, a wish list of how the town's gonna be better. It's, it's really, I see where Mark's coming from.
So is the town gonna be better by pushing everybody into small areas?
But that's, that's the thing, is like, there's a, you know, you look at, you look at town plans, you know, when they do like, what is it, eight years now? Isn't it eight years we do a plan? You know, you try to, you try to set your goals for eight years, and I can't imagine, there's a lot of municipalities that are actually reaching every goal in their town plan within eight years.
There's nothing, there's no, there's no mechanism to enforce, is I guess what he's trying to say.
I'm not gonna get fined for it.
You know, we could put like, oh, we're gonna try, you know, what the Regional's asking, you know, is not enforceable. It's not like if you can't re, where's the enforcement arm?
I'll never put in our town plan that we should be fall forced into the village and not be able to have a single home outside here. I mean, that, that kinda stuff.
It doesn't exactly say that.
It's exactly what it's saying. And that's why I say you have to look below the line. And I, I know you're not agreeing with me, Tom, and that's fine. But I, I got, you gotta watch the wording in these things, how they put it in place. And I don't think it's up to us to tell other people in town how, how to do it or where to build their houses.
Well, it's still up to your Planning Commission, your zoning, and your zoning adjustment. I mean, that's where.
There's a whole lot of stuff here.
All right, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta pull some, I gotta pull some seniority on you here, Mark. We've been doing this since nineteen eighty-nine and everything has changed. Because, you know, when I first went on zoning, the purpose and intent of zoning is to avoid the overcrowding of land. If a house catches on fire, all your neighbors aren't gonna burn. Well, now, I think maybe it's time for Rick to go take his wife Sandy and say, I, I've done the best. Keep me posted. Send me a postcard. No, seriously, it's a different time. But Mark is right. I've read through that document. By twenty fifty, they want fifty percent of the land in Vermont conserved.
Yeah.
You know, is that what, is that what you want? Is that what you want?
It's all part of Agenda twenty-one, twenty thirty, which actually, the government is gonna own thirty percent of all land in the United States.
But we just took.
They want, they want everybody living on top of each other in fifteen-minute cities.
I know.
But we went on a leaf peeping tour today, and I was thinking, we went up over one twenty-five and came back over Lincoln Gap. I was like, man, there's a lot of land here.
Yeah. I did that this weekend.
What are these people talking about? But yeah, Alicia, I don't know why I can remember this, but I'm pretty sure you were at the meeting when we went to get our, a plan approved. Did you go? You went down to Rutland Regional, yeah, because it was, you know, we did it, we did it without a planner. You know, and we had a pretty green Planning Commission, and it did a hell of a job. And we, and we put some, and we didn't, there was some stuff in there that we didn't feel should be in there. And we said, we're gonna go with this, and we went to the Rutland Regional plan and we gave our presentation. And it passed by two votes, and they weren't happy about it, and called for a recount of the three votes, and it passed by one vote. Well, you only need one vote. It doesn't matter. So we had our plan. But something that I didn't say before when I was gabbing is, when we redid our plan, we amended it, but somehow, because we made enough changes in it, we were able to extend that plan out eight years from that point.
Yeah, there was some wording we had to do.
There was some wording that we were able to do.
And we followed Rutland Regional's guidelines for that.
Right, so.
And that was, that was very reasonable, what they had there.
We've got this person coming hopefully to our next Planning Commission meeting. As I can remember, his last name is Solomon. He's been working with, with Brandon.
Adam, is it Adam?
He's brand new too.
Wait, he's from Rutland Regional?
Rutland Regional. So, you know, and he's a planner.
Okay.
So I figured, hey, listen to what he says. We're a member of Regional. It doesn't cost us to use Regional, right?
Yeah, we pay them. We do pay, pay.
Yeah.
Let's see what they got to say. But I just wanna make sure that, because we gotta, we've gotta get moving. If you guys are gonna do an ordinance or work on the ordinance, then it's off hours. I'd like to see what they say with Regional. Dave talked about the modernization grant.
Yep.
And at least we've got a sense of direction where we're going, because like Mike says, you know, and you people are busy. I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus. And then the last thing is, is Dave Mills, it is now, he says, off the Regional. Donna is the, is the alternate. If she's willing to take it, I would hope you can at least consider her. I mean, so she can come back to the Planning Commission and tell us what's going on at Regional.
Yep.
Because that's the way it's supposed to work.
Somebody for alternate to fill that's.
And that was the other thing.
Well, I don't know. I didn't realize, I knew Dave was getting off, but I didn't realize he was already off, so I guess we'll have to discuss that.
And I truly think we have to look to you guys to tell us what's coming up and what's, you know, what you wanna do with that on the next time around, for sure. I mean, that's what we, you know, when it comes to the policy, when it comes to the energy plan.
But Dave is gonna look at ordinances.
Yeah, the ordinances.
Yeah, I got that written though.
Okay. And at least that'll take care of, and Mike is, Mike sent it to you. I've still, I've still gotta talk to him.
All right, so that's where we're gonna, that's where we're, yeah, well, so that's where we'll stay for now, let's have you look into that.
And you're fine with me applying for the bylaw modernization?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
How much is that grant here?
It's a great idea.
I don't know right off the top of my head. I'm sure it's in here somewhere, but it covers quite a bit. Mostly it goes to whoever's helping us do it, so. And I think it's an in-kind match, so we're, we're good.
Because the first one was ten, the town had to do ten percent, wasn't it? First one that you sent to us.
Well, that was the one for the municipal planning, yeah, but that was the one that they really.
I know, 'cause I remember seeing that too. They weren't all ten percent match?
The, the bylaw, but I think we can do in-kind on the bylaw, I mean, so.
But you didn't, did you send, submit by the September thirtieth deadline, or no?
The bylaw one's not due until November first, so.
Till November first, okay. But we wouldn't be able to do the town plan without doing an energy plan.
You could do the town plan.
We could do the town plan, but not with, with planning grants, right?
Not with this one.
Right.
We can, we'll, we'll find something.
You'll figure it out.
Or we'll just, let's see how much RPC wants to help out too.
Right.
Well, that's what I figured. We pay, we already paid for it.
Well, that's, yeah, we should take advantage of that. I know, I know. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Please tell David Mills he may come, he can come back.
Oh, yeah.
Good night.
Go to the meetings.
Good night. Tell, uh, phone, phone.
Yeah, I did too.
Bye. Good night.
Derek, have a good night.
Put something that we're not going along with that crap.
You're right about that. We'll, we'll go on in the interest of time.
Yeah, in the interest of time, and I, yeah.
I gotta move to, yeah.
Oh, crying out loud, what's going on? All right, we're moving on without him.
Yeah, let's go.
Um, okay, Veterans Day ceremony. I did talk to, um. Oh, shoot.
She won't go far.
I did talk to.
Go ahead and clear a room, huh?
I know. I did talk to Ann Pelkey. Um, she, she already spearheads the Memorial Day event. She said she's not for, so she's, would rather not for Veterans Day ceremony. But that doesn't mean, she's gonna reach out to some other people in the Historical Society. But it has historically been the town manager.
I, I gotta be honest with you, I am, I'm probably not the person that you want to speak there, so.
I don't know.
I, you know, Ann and I have been talking about it, and I mean, I can certainly talk to Ann about it.
So there's very little speaking that would be required of you. The hard, and what she said is the hard part is getting a speaker. And it's getting harder every year between Veterans and Memorial Day, like, we kinda tapped, we've already, I mean, it doesn't mean we can't have a re, we can't, doesn't mean we can't have a repeat speaker, but that's usually, that's what she said, is usually the most difficult part of these events is trying to find someone who is willing to speak. Your role's more of like emcee.
A facilitator?
And that's what she did.
Yeah, right.
She did fine. Yeah, it was much, just moving from one thing to the other.
Yeah.
But we need to find someone as a guest speaker.
Yeah.
So if anybody has any ideas.
I don't know who the professor was from Kansas.
I know, 'cause he was really good.
That was several years ago.
Oh, Eric Stage. Never had him yet. I mean, he is ex-military. He's a career guy. He's right here in town.
Hey, anybody?
Yeah, I know Eric.
Yeah.
Call him for you. I will do that for you.
That sounds great. Also, um, Ann did also say that if, um, I mean, if John didn't leave like a file somewhere.
We found some stuff.
Okay, 'cause if not, then obviously, um, uh, all of it's documented at the Historical Society, and I'd be happy to go through.
We found like a, like a sheet of kind of fill in the blanks.
Okay.
So it wasn't much.
No, I, I, no, I saw that, you had that in the packet. I mean, like, um, like a list of, of all the speakers we've had thus far.
Oh, okay.
If, if he didn't leave something like that, I could go to, I could go to the Historical Society and just go every, all that would be documented.
Trying to put like the Veterans Day stuff together, so I'm sure she has it.
Okay. Is there anything else we need to discuss about that right now?
I guess not. I guess we'll just move forward with that, and if, Mark, if you wanna have Eric reach out tomorrow, whatever, we'll go from there. I'm fine with that.
Perfect. Okay.
That was easy.
All right, it was. Um.
Don't be saying that yet.
Yeah, not at all.
November's coming quick though. I mean, we do need a kind of.
I don't know.
September flew by fast.
Yes, it did.
Um, so, I guess, before we move on from that, so then I guess it would be contacting like, um, um, the music teacher at Lothrup.
Usually the Boy Scouts.
Kevin Carvey's son used to play Taps.
Yeah, I don't know.
I can check with O Vito and see if they have.
Yeah, oldie band, usually they.
Boy Scouts are always there. Um, who am I forgetting?
We just followed the agenda for once.
I mean, yeah, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be easy to say.
And let them do it and do the best we can.
Don't forget the hot chocolate and coffee for afterwards.
Dave.
What's that?
Bob Barido, I think, set up the sound system, didn't he?
Yep.
I think so.
Yeah, Sean said we have one down that maybe fire or something.
Yeah, we've got one down there, yeah.
I know, he's actually on here from, I don't know what year this was, but this was one of the, oh, twenty seventeen. Yep. He was actually this, looks like he was this, anyways, okay.
Anyway, yeah.
Anyway. Um, all right, budget season schedule.
So we've, um, well, we're in that season, I guess, so.
Yeah, it's budget season right now.
We have sent stuff out to all the department heads, and Ann and I have been working on stuff, just, you know, trying to just jot things down and getting stuff together. So I think it's probably time we meet. I'm just wondering, when is a good time for everyone to do that?
Is it still?
Still.
Did you put the second one on?
No, not yet.
How, how have you guys done it?
Ice pack.
Where is it?
Well, I had surgery today and it's.
Is there an ice pack?
I doubt it. I'm leaking.
Well, we got, we got this handy-dandy little.
Wow, look at that.
Oh, wow, you carry that with you everywhere?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I got it when he.
Oh, I didn't realize he started leaking.
Oh, I saw it.
Yeah, you ordered here.
Down my neck and.
If not, I got a tourniquet in the truck. You can use my pal, put it around your neck.
I don't know if that was.
I don't know. Kelly's gonna come over and review.
Have you guys done it for the past? Budget season like before a board meeting or after a board meeting or all day at night?
Uh, we do it during.
Okay.
Oh, this is a cold pack this week.
But we can, I mean, I'm amenable to changes if you think it would help, if it, you know, I don't.
It's up to you guys. I mean, it's.
Didn't we have a couple extra?
We had to last year because it was.
We had to, yeah, last year was not.
It was not a normal year. Normally, we, normally what has happened, John comes up with some stuff, brings it to us, discusses it. Say, no, John, we need this changed. It goes, goes back and forth.
So how do you guys wanna do it? Do you wanna do it like the budget as a whole right off the bat, or do you wanna do it by department?
What we've done in the past is we bring the departments in, and they present what they think their budget needs to be to us, so we know.
they think their budget needs to be to us, so we know, and then we take all of that data and put it in.
Right, so that's, that's what I'm wondering, but do you guys want to see the entire budget for all three budget seasons, or do you want to see like just the department budgets for the meetings that they're at, and then we, we comprise it all and go over it after?
I don't, I think we comprise, yeah, I mean, is.
So just do it by department.
From my perspective, as soon as, as soon as you can bring Warful in with his budget, present to us, you know, bring, say, what do you got, half a dozen departments, six, seven departments?
We could start next meeting, then, because they've already.
That's what I'm saying, next meeting, bring half of them in, bring half in the next meeting, that way, we understand why they're asking for what they're asking for.
Sure, yeah, that's no problem.
And then we can say, yay or nay, and whatever.
Okay.
And then, once that's done, then you bring in the whole budget, and we start working on that. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
That worked good, you know, it works fast.
It would be nice to have a, kind of like last year's budget, just proposed years for comparison to.
So the way we've, I should just grab what I have, so is what, is what we've done is had the, the way, I'm just going to grab it so I can show you. Oh, no, I can't, I gave it to Ann, never mind. So, we've done the last two years of budget actual, so you'll have budget actual for twenty-two, and then budget actual for twenty-three, and then for what we've done this year and where we currently stand. So, you know, you just do the math to kind of figure out where we'll end up that year.
Where we need to be, that's, yes.
Yeah, and then I, I've had Ann like leave just like a blank line on the end, so, you know, people can write things in, or whatever.
Oh, that'd be nice.
Pretty, pretty rough, but it, it seems to work the best, I think, so.
Let's give it a try, if we need it adjusted, we'll.
Yeah, we can do whatever.
Right, we can write.
At least start.
Yeah.
Sooner we start, the better.
I know, that'll make me more comfortable, at least on last year.
Yeah, I mean, because, we're just going through some stuff today, we've been, we've been throwing things back and forth, and.
Yep, all fine.
And I, I've got a lot of changes, I'd like to throw at you guys for some things, so.
Sure.
Well, I like that line at the end, so we can write down what we come up with, and then, yeah.
Yep.
All right, excuse me, um, all right, so transfer station discussion, so.
We'll have to call a rescue squad for him.
I think, done that once, he wasn't.
Yeah.
So, this has come up a few times, that, so, if you see, we've got the new contract with Casellas that I have, we have not signed yet, and our recycling fees are going through the roof, because, I think as y'all know, it's getting more expensive to get rid of recycling than it is trash.
Right.
Um, so, Casellas had sent me the, the, the first email here, that's just kind of saying how it was broke down before, the new service agreement, um, and then, the, this is actually our budget, so this page is ours, and that shows in the red where we've ended up last year, where.
Okay, got it.
Forty-something thousand in the hole on it.
Holy.
So, and I guess this has been trending like that for a little while, um, yeah, because last twenty-two it was thirty-eight, last year it was forty-two, um, so, I, my goal at town fair this year was to ask every municipality that I saw how they were dealing with recycling, if they were running their own transfer stations, and everyone's starting to charge like a buck fifty for like a trash bag full of recycling to get something out of it.
Okay, versus we're charging what?
Nothing for recycling. So, you know, it's, and then I think, I think we might want to start having a discussion on if it's more feasible for us to actually, like, um, have someone else run the transfer station, that's under entity, that can, you know, run it same hours and everything, and, um, so we get out of the garbage business? It, it might, well, we won't have to go through this, we won't lose forty thousand dollars a year, I mean, that's, that's an employee, you know, that we're losing on that, and I, I don't know what's, you know, I know we have the cards, and then there's, they don't take cash down at the transfer station, but they take checks, and I think there's a lot of moving parts there, where if we just got out of it, and someone came in and maybe did it by weight of a bag, or so much for a bag of recycling, it's going to happen no matter what, and we might as well start the, the fee first for recycling so that people get used to it, because it's, I mean, it's, unfortunately, that's the way it's going, and.
Are there other towns that could, that set a better example for us to?
Plan.
Okay, so, is what I found, Joe, is most of the other towns are subbing it out to other folks to run their transfer station, so.
That is what they're doing?
Yep, yep. Apparently, there's an article in the Herald today that Clarendon's doing something of theirs, I haven't read it yet, so Butch was telling me about it today.
I have the paper at home, I didn't read it today.
Yeah, I'll have to read that, but I, I'm just wondering if, if you guys are open to us just doing a little, maybe sending an RFP out to see what it would entail if someone else ran it, and try to figure out how we want to get rid of this deficit that we go in.
I think we should absolutely look at it, yeah.
You know, so.
I know, because it's like no one, this isn't just like a, our town problem, it's like a country.
It's everywhere.
Like, nobody's.
It's, it's a big problem.
You know, there's nowhere to sell it anymore.
Yeah, so.
Maybe a better way.
Let's look, see if we see.
Well, we need to look.
But are you all okay with us to start charging like a dollar fifty for a bag of recycling?
Well, we can't be negative.
That's a, that's a lot of money, I mean, I don't even know what that's going to cover.
What do we?
Well, how much is that going to give us back against our negative?
Right, I, I don't know, I was trying to figure the numbers out with the tonnage on here, but there's so many different variables on this, I've got to, I'm going to have to talk to Casell a little bit more and see like, you know, what they're bringing in, or taking out every week, and go from there, and figure out what we could.
What's a bag now, like, um, oh, first, I should know this, we just did a policy last year, right, it's like thirty gallon, what's?
Oh, the, the garbage bags, I think they're thirty gallon, I think, are the normal ones.
Thirty gallon bag, yes.
And then, and we charge what for that?
For recycling?
Zero for recycling.
No, no, talk about trash.
Is it two fifty, two, it's two something?
I'm just trying to make a comparison between the trash and the recycling.
What is it, ten punches on a cart, and a cart I think is twenty-five dollars?
So it's fifty. Two fifty a bag.
Yeah, it's two fifty a bag, then, yeah.
Well, the end result, it go, it goes by weight, we're charged for.
Right.
Yeah, for us, definitely.
But we aren't going to. Estimate a two fifty that we're hitting that.
Right, but we aren't going to weigh every bag, so.
Well, that's, that's.
The problem.
Right.
I did talk to a couple around the area that are charging like a buck fifty for the thirty gallon bag, and then I think a dollar for like a kitchen bag. It's working for them, you know, since they started it, but we have to see, like, I want to take these numbers and actually figure out how much it's costing us, um, you know, like per ton, or however they're, because it is by weight.
We want more trash down in Syndicate.
Well, that, that's the problem, when you start raising prices too much, it goes somewhere else.
Well, I mean, the other thing is, is if that's, you know, look at it like, this is just what it's going to cost the town to stay in business, you know, and.
Well, no, I get that.
Just for fun, because we're talking trash and recycling, can we find out just for fun? Can, um, can, uh, we, like, Procter has townwide pickup.
That's very expensive.
Is it? That's, I just wanted to get a number on that.
Yeah, I can certainly get the number, and that was crazy expensive, yeah.
Okay. I just, I really don't want to see more, we have already too many dump sites around Pittsburgh that drives me nuts.
Oh, yeah, oh, I know.
Well, that's, thinking if it stays under the trash price, there might still be incentive, I mean, people aren't recycling, aren't going to start recycling, you know, like, I mean, that's really the reality of it.
Well, and it is, and if, if they're both the same price, they're just going to put it all in one bag.
Right, and also at the same time, Gleason Road, as far as I know, doesn't charge anything for recycling.
No, they don't.
So I mean, if we're going to start charging for recycling, people can go to Gleason Road and dump their recycling bag.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
This, this has more merit.
So I, I did speak to Mark Shay a little bit up there, too, about, you know, he, because he runs Gleason Road, or Solid Waste District, so, I, I'll open the conversation more and just see what we can come up with, but I think right now, like, we need to charge something for recycling, if you guys are okay with that.
Yep, the league, the city and town, they, they wouldn't give us any.
No, the solid waste districts have the best information about it, so, which is fine, and that's what they do all day long, so.
Should we give a little heads up time, though, just so people are aware, or something?
Oh, yeah, well, we were, we were called names when the water and sewer went up a little bit, so, I can only imagine what they'll call us when we do this.
Well, I think that, you know, I mean, they can see that, I mean, that's killing our budget, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, basically, they're paying for it either way.
So, yeah, they're paying for taxes, or they're paying.
But that's the thing, if we look at this, I mean, we would, we would definitely have to increase our operating, you know, cost for the, for the transfer station by forty-five thousand dollars immediately, just to break even.
Right.
So.
Might be a better way.
There's, I think there might be a better way, maybe, like I said, maybe getting out of the business is a better way, if you want me to.
Yeah.
Did Brandon, Brandon have a pretty good system, did they, or?
We got rid of it, and it's run by an outside, and now it's great, like, it's, well, we were leasing it to another company, and it was, the contract was up, and it was not working well, so, it's, but now the town has nothing to do with it, so none of the, none of the costs go through the town.
Could I recommend that we look at the options before we put anything in place?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yes.
Yeah, before we start charging, let's look at the options.
I think that's a good idea. So we'll, uh, we'll revisit this next meeting.
As long as that discussion's in the minute, so that people can see we're discussing that.
Yep, that's a good idea.
I would say, if you sell it, Brandon, they would probably just absorb it into their own cost, because I know, uh, wasted management runs several of the town landfills or, uh, transfer stations in New York, they're not actually run by the town.
Hmm, okay.
So, that's an outside company, I don't think wasted management is here, but you wouldn't want to deal with them anyways.
Yeah, there's a couple that do it, Joe, that, that are starting to run some transfer stations, so.
I think MBI is also doing it, because I used to be garbage, so.
You have a garbage background?
Yeah.
So, you know.
Nothing like working on a truck with maggots falling on you.
You know what we're going through, then.
Just stay away from the juice, it's corrosive.
Yeah.
So, so.
Meet an MBI.
All right, well, thanks for that, I think it's definitely worth looking into.
I drove a Rolls that was missing two-thirds of its license plate, it was all corroded. Like a Monarch truck. Yep, that's the juice.
All right, well, let's move on to capitalization policy.
So this has come out of our recent visits with our auditors, and, um, the fixed assets plan, the, or list that you saw at the last meeting.
Yep.
Um, so, Ann and I actually took a couple of these policies and kind of looked them over, and came up with, you know, what's in front of you, that we really should have some type of, you know, method of how we're capitalizing our assets, and this seems to be kind of the common way with where the thresholds are for dollar amounts, so, that's really what it is.
I read through this, and I thought it was very good.
Yeah.
I thought everything looked appropriate for how you want to handle us.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion to accept this, or?
Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this capitalization policy as presented by Dave.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, thank you.
And finally, any questions on the orders? Oh, and did we have an extra one that we need to put on?
So, we did, it was in front of you, um, yeah, I don't know what I did with it, it's a short one, uh.
It's a short one, yeah.
Five thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars, yeah.
Oh, yeah, so, Kelly, do you have that second one? Okay, so it was for five thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars and ninety-four cents.
First time I've seen, we don't have a question on it.
Is there no question on any of them? Okay.
Did you guys notice we're putting like this other little line on here now, so it actually gives a little snippet of what is actually being paid?
Yes, which is helpful.
Yeah.
What did I notice about one of them? Postage was spelled wrong, that's what I noticed.
Very good, I missed that.
All right, you start handing some stuff down there, and we'll sign by.
Uh, let's see, I can hand it all at once if you want.
Sure.
It's not as bad as it looks.
You don't need it.
Oh, and Dave, we might need another first aid kit, where like the cold pack works, and.
An updated kit.
So, you know, where did you find that one, was it over here? All right, so, um, Cintas, Cintas, is it Cintas? They actually do our, the one that, the big one that's in the bathroom.
Yeah.
I'll just have them do a new kit for us here, so.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Because they come in, they, they service it like every couple months or so, so.
Oh, okay.
If things are outdated, though.
That's good to know.
Yeah, I'll certainly do that, just leave it, leave it right out there, so when I walk in tomorrow, I'll see it.
Okay.
Is it?
I was still bleeding.
I don't think so.
I don't stop bleeding.
Yeah, well, yeah, then they got to cut it out of you.
What do you?
You know.
Oh, I can't do that here.
I.
No, I gave that profession.
If he was gushing, I'd say, yeah, maybe, but he's not gushing.
If he was gushing, I wouldn't be able to run home and get it. You know, like.
Have a later in the office, in my office, give it a shot. Can we find a piece of metal there somewhere?
My signature's left out.
Yeah. If you think it's your left ear, it'd be hard to sign. If you think it's your left ear, it's hard to sign, yeah.
All right, well, then, if there's nothing else, then that concludes our meeting.